All right. Seems how it's six o'clock. Call this meeting to order. If you will all join me and rise and then we'll pledge allegiance.
Public hearing? No? Yes?
Well, oh, we have a public hearing up top. Oh, you're right. Thank you, Carolyn. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, take that back. I will do the pledge after. All right, sorry. Seems how it's six o'clock. We open the public hearing on the proposed $7,000 donation from the Jack and Dorothy Byrne Foundation for the IRS Destination Imagination Team, RSA 198, code 20-B. And we open the public hearing. Is there any public comment on the donation? Questions from the board? Or anything? Very excited, yes?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. All right, that being said, 601, close the public hearing and call the school board meeting to order. Please rise and join me in pledging allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And I will entertain a motion for approval of minutes, public and non-public. If you will.
I'm going to motion accept. Public and non-public.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Yeah? Any comments, questions, corrections, concerns? I didn't see anything that jumped out. No?
No.
All right. Saying no further comment. All those in favor of approving the minutes, public and non-public for April 11th, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
And abstained, thank you. Okay. Up next, we have public comments. Opening public comments. Amy, you can go down if you want, just to...
Good, everyone. My name's Amy Morris. I'm the music director here at high school. And I just wanted to, first of all, say that we just returned from our trip to Washington, DC. And students and the adults had an amazing time. In my 25 years, probably the best student trip that I've led. And they were just phenomenal, to the point where others recognized their efforts as well. So I just wanted to show you some things that we won. Before I do that, I want to publicly thank the school board for their support of our trip. And just, we really appreciate your enthusiasm about our travel. It's been five years since we traveled as a department. And I think we made you pretty proud. I hope we made you proud. And I also would like to thank the Jack and Dorothy Byrne Foundation, Mascoma Bank, the Brundage Foundation, Experiencing the Arts, which we have here in our district, and the... is it Brundage Foundation?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And, oh, Enfield Tasty Pizza also helped a lot with fundraising. So, and many, many other people that pitched in since we started fundraising in August. So the students performed in two different venues. The chorus performed at the National City Christian Church in downtown Washington, DC. It's a beautiful, beautiful old church that celebrates 200 years plus. And they bring back the bronze award for performance. And the band performed at the Northern Virginia Community College, which calls themselves NOVA, in a really new space that they just created a couple of years ago. And the band brings back the gold award. So superior ranking for the band this year. And then, to top it all off, there is an award that we received that Tim has. And you're welcome to touch it, but it is class.
It is class.
I thought it was the duplexi class.
Oh, it's real deal.
So, this is the Spirit Award, given to this group that best represents their school and community. The Heritage Festival staff, along with recommendations from the adjudicators, will determine the winner based on group's cooperation and enthusiastic support of all festival activities during their festival journey. This is the last award of the evening. And the adjudicators and directors of the festival said they thought this was the most important award. Because out of 900-plus students in the gala that went to the final night, our little Masoma took home the award showing the best spirit. If you have a second, I want to share two quick stories with you about this. And it was amazing, first of all. It was amazing, amazing to receive this award. But our kids are special, like, really special. And it became very obvious in our five days in DC just how incredible they are as human beings. While we were in the choral performance at the church, the adjudicator came up and started talking through some of the process, you know, about singing. And, well, how often do you meet? And I looked at the band, I looked at the kids, and I said, well, there's something about this group that's a little different. And there was 18 kids in front of me. And she goes, oh. And I go, um, raise your hand if you're in chorus. And six kids raised their hand. And I said, raise your hand if you're in band. And the other 12 raised their hands. And she goes, what? And I go, well, they helped out the chorus because we wanted to bring an ensemble that could be balanced out. And so the band kids jumped in. So that, at the evening, the guy said, the choral person said, oh, that was it. Seal the deal, right there. Masoma's getting the Spirit Award. Because they didn't know half the stuff that the adjudicator was saying to them. They just knew that they were there singing. And they had maybe one rehearsal at school for 20 minutes, and then we sang on the bus down to DC. So they were a little bit fish out of water, but they put themselves out there, and it was amazing. And the second thing that came up that sort of clinched the award for us was the day of Saturday morning?
Yes.
Performance, I'm sorry. I'm asking Tim, because he's a little boggy. Band was performing out at NOVA, and we were the first of the day. And this was after we saw a lot of the 94 and Lady Miss of the 94, and we were just tired. And they were on the stage, and this director comes up to me with a coordinator almost in tears and says, not the coordinator, but this director, she says, I have the biggest favor to ask you, and I know that your group's already on stage, but can I, like, our lead trumpet player, her trumpet got damaged on the ride down. It's unplayable. And is there any way possible that you could loan us an instrument? Do you have an extra trumpet? Not an extra, as I was saying, yeah. And she, oh, you know, like crying, like, I was like, okay, it's not that big of a deal. She was so, like, taken aback. And I said, yeah, let me ask the first trumpet player. So right as we were getting onto the stage, I said to Annika Bishop, hey, they told us. And she goes, oh, yeah, no problem. Come take it. They were the group right after us. So we ended up staying. I brought Annika to meet this girl backstage and hand the trumpet off. The girl was just, like, shaking with excitement. That evening, at the gala that we went to, they came up to us, and the director said to Annika, they had flowers for both myself and Annika. And they had a card that said, thank you, you saved us, you saved our trumpet. Now, this is Arlene Mercy High School. It's an all-girls Catholic high school. They were great, great. And she goes, you did not have to do that. You did not have to look at a stranger and say, sure. She goes, but that was just such, like, so pure of heart. She goes, you're amazing. And Annika's mom's standing there bawling, you know. That was before we won this award. But the other person that coordinated the awards said, that was it for me, the trumpet. So I said to her, you know, that's a no-brainer for these kids. And she said, well, it's not like that for every kid that we have come through here, I have to tell you. There are many kids that groups that would have said, you're, sorry, I can't help you. And I said, well, that's just, we're just Masoma. We just, like, you know, if we have it, we'll give it away. So, loan it to somebody else. So, anyway, you should be very proud of our students. I know I am. And these will be going on our wall of fame out there and in their trophy case. And again, thank you all for your support. And if you see the kids, ask them to tell you some stories, because they have some great adventures that occurred. And thank you to Tim for being my wingman and like you.
Thank you.
It was awesome. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for that update, since we just got back. So I wanted to make sure everybody heard about all the cool words about those kids. They really did make us proud, so I thought you'd also hear that.
Thanks.
Any other public comment? Okay. We will hold public comment for 30 minutes, or at the end of the meeting, or whatever the law says. So we'll do that thing. All right. Presentation we have tonight for the youth risk behavior survey. Take it away.
Sure.
It's all yours.
Want you to make sure we're on camera or anything?
No, don't worry.
Yeah, we're fine.
You'll be fine. They'll hear you.
Okay.
So that's...
All right. Well, thank you so much for inviting us here tonight to talk about the youth risk behavior survey. My name is Andrea Smith. I'm a community health partnership coordinator with Dartmouth Hitchcock, and I co-facilitate All Together. And Hillary, you want to introduce yourself?
Sure. I'm Hillary Schuler. I work with Andrea at Dartmouth Health. I'm a Masoma alum. I graduated in 2008, and I'm an Enfield resident, so really excited to be working with this district. I am sort of Masoma's primary contact for anything prevention in regards to substance misuse, suicide prevention. I'm doing a lot of work with the middle school, which we'll talk a little bit about.
Yeah, so we're just here for a little bit of time tonight, but these are a few of the things that we want to just go over. I want to give you a little bit of information about All Together, about this coalition, a little bit of information about the Public Health Council of the Upper Valley. I'm going to explain a little bit about the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. I know I was here maybe two years ago at this point to talk about the 2019. So if there's some new faces, I'll just give a little bit of a refresher on what the Youth Risk Behavior Survey is. Hillary will go over the actual data from 2021. And then we'll talk a little bit about some of the work that we do and how we can bring prevention to the school. And then we'll open it up to any questions that people might have. Okay, so just, I'm just curious, who in the room, I know one person at least, has heard of All Together? Yeah? Okay, so a few people have. So All Together is our region's, the Upper Valley's regional Substance Misuse and Suicide Prevention Coalition. So like I mentioned, I co-facilitate this with two other people. So it is based out of, it's sort of based out of Dartmouth Hitchcock. We are in year nine of this grant, so it's a drug-free communities grant. That's where the funding comes from. But really, we are the community resource for all things prevention, treatment, recovery, intervention, advocacy for, like I said, substance misuse and suicide. We envision an Upper Valley region where people are safe, healthy, supported, and connected and valued. Our coalition is made up of diverse stakeholders. We have people from all different sectors, but we also welcome people to continue to join. We're always looking for people to be more active with us. Specifically, we're looking for maybe a parent or caregiver voice or a youth voice. So keep that in mind if you know of any people that are looking to get involved in this type of work. And really, our main goal of this is to reduce the harms of substance misuse and prevent suicide in the Upper Valley region. We do this by using a data-driven and evidence-based process. We engage all sectors of the community in building awareness around alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. And then, like I said, risk factors for suicide. We work to ensure that we use evidence-based prevention, early intervention, appropriate referrals, knowledgeable case management, improved treatment access, and recovery supports to community members. And then we develop a robust regional prevention capacity by maintaining the coalition at a regional level and then support local coalitions where applicable to help target and reduce the harms of alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs, and prevent suicide. And then a little bit, has anybody heard of the Public Health Council of the Upper Valley? Hopefully, almost everybody has heard of that. So, so the Public Health Council, as one of New Hampshire State's, the 13 regional public health networks, the Public Health Council is the largest and broadest coalition in the Upper Valley that advocates on public health and population health issues in our region. They're comprised of community leaders and representatives from many different sectors. But the reason I share that is because All Together, we serve as the work group for addressing substance misuse in the region. And so for the folks that are here tonight, is the Youth Risk Behavior Survey new to anybody? Is there anyone in the room that has never heard of the Youth Risk Behavior Survey? No? Okay. Good. I'm glad to hear that. So just as a refresher, this survey is conducted every two years. It is through the CDC, and it's a representative sample of youth, excuse me, in grades nine through 12. The survey monitors six types of health risk behaviors that contribute to leading causes of death and disability among youth and adults. And that can include behaviors that contribute to unintentional injuries and violence, sexual behaviors that contribute to unintended pregnancy and sexually transmitted diseases, alcohol and other drug use, which is a big one that we look at, other unhealthy dietary behaviors and inadequate physical activity. So in New Hampshire, the YRBS is jointly administered by the Departments of Health and Human Services and Education. And really, the main, you know, in the work that we do, we really value this data because the data that we get out of it is really what drives our annual work plans, all of the prevention work that we can do. And so the nice thing is that we can get reports based on each school district, and it really helps us to target the prevention that we can serve to the school district so that we're not really doing a blanket thing across the entire region. So that's really helpful for us to have. And so just an overall look at the 2021 Youth Risk Behavior Survey, it was completed by 13,757 students in 69 public high schools in New Hampshire during the fall of 2021. The school response rate for the whole state was 85%, and the student response rate for the whole state was 78%. And so now Hillary's going to talk a little bit more about the specific results of Masoma. So for... Sorry, I'm going to do a little switch off here.
So for Masoma Valley Regional School District, and again, this is just high school students taking this, the school's response rate for the students was 74%, meaning 259 of the 348 enrolled students took this survey. 121 students identified as female and 135 students identifying as male completed their survey. So you can see the breakdown by grade. But student privacy must remain the number one priority. So all of the data we get, it's not tied to an individual. Some of the data, the sample size is so small that we don't get an actual number because if we were, it would identify potentially who the students or that answered that question. So no names or other types of personally identifying information are ever requested. So please keep in mind that this is just giving us data. This doesn't tell us the why students are behaving this way. This just gives us the data, which is a really great starting point for us to have some conversations around prevention. So vaping has been a hot topic among a lot of high schools in our state. So this is the use of electronic vapor products in the past 30 days. So vaping continues to be a concern. Masoma's reported use is 18.9%, whereas the state is 16.2. So we're a little bit higher than state-reported electronic vapor use in the past 30 days. The highest reported use was among 12th graders. You can see there is a slight decrease from 2019, which is great. We want to see this come down. 2019's numbers were pretty high. And you can tell the navy blue is the Masoma data and the light blue is the state data. So feeling unsafe at school, this question falls under the topic of bullying, electronic bullying and fighting category. Students were asked during the past 30 days, on how many days did you not want to go to school because you felt you would be unsafe at school or on your way to or from school? So this number continues to vary year to year, but as you can see, there was an increase in 2021, both for Masoma but also for the state. A little bit concerning, our numbers are not that high when you look at the big picture, but we are seeing an increase, which we do want to think about. So this relationships category, we saw a slight increase in sexual and physical dating violence, which is the light blue. And then the navy is the sexual dating violence, the light blue is the physical dating violence. As a reminder, WISE is a really great resource for relationship, dating violence, sexual violence. But for sexual violence from 2019 to 2021, it went from 6.2% to 8.6%. And physical dating violence increased from 7.3% to 11%. So as you can tell, it's a bit of a jump from 2019 to 2021. And when we look at the YRBS data, we go, it's 100 pages of data. And we comb through, so we're only pulling out things that are alarming to us. But if you have questions about certain topics, we're happy to look it up and dive a bit deeper into it, but we wanted to, it would take us hours to go through all of the data. So as you can imagine, emotional health has also been another hot topic as students have come out of COVID. So this is looking at students who felt sad or hopeless for at least two weeks straight that they've stopped doing something that they normally do. 42.9% of Masoma students reported feeling sad or hopeless. And the Upper Valley data for this same question is 33.3%. So we are a bit higher. And as you can see, the state number as well. So we're not as high as the state, but we are higher than when you look at the Upper Valley region as a whole. And so this is another emotional health category. So the plus and minus signs that you see over here indicate whether we are above or below the state averages, and the arrows indicate whether Masoma rates have gone up or down. So 21.4% of students seriously considered attempting suicide in the past 12 months. So we are less than the state, but that number, the rates for Masoma numbers are going down for that. 17.5% of those students made a plan about how they would attempt suicide in the past 12 months. And 10.2% of students had at least one suicide attempt in the past 12 months. So we know there's a lot of work that needs to be done in regards to mental health across the Upper Valley, not just at school to school, but a lot of students have, especially coming out of COVID. We've heard things, we're now seeing the data to support the things that we're hearing. And mental health continues to be a concern. And just as a reminder, 988 is a great lifeline for students as well as parents, adults, caregivers. The next is current use trends. So this is looking at past 30-day use again. We're looking at the alcohol use, marijuana use, and prescription drug use without a doctor's note. So 6% of students report having used a prescription medication without a doctor's prescription. And you can see that there's a break in this data because in 2019, we don't have data. So when questions get added or taken away from YRBS, we either get new data or we don't get the same data. So there was a break in the way that the question was asked. So we don't have 2019 data on that. We saw a slight increase in students reporting the ease of access to prescription medications without a doctor's prescription. So this could be due to students being at home more during the pandemic. They have more access because they're home, they're not at school, they're not doing the things that they were doing prior. We participate in two national prescription drug take-back day events. One just happened this last Saturday, another one will happen in the fall. And that's a really great time where we urge the public to clean out their medication. We take anything. There were people bringing in ibuprofen, Tylenol, like, anything to reduce means of access to youth we want. Enfield Police Station and Canaan both have permanent prescription drop boxes. You can also drop off a vape device without the battery. So as long as the battery is removed, a vape device can get put in those drop boxes and they get incinerated. But looking at, I would anticipate that we are going to see a dramatic increase of the poundage that was collected from this April Take Back Day, just seeing how much people were bringing in from the community, which is great. We want people to get rid of those medications. We are seeing a downward trend in past 30-day use of alcohol, which is fantastic. Binge drinking stayed roughly the same, so that's not up on here. In 2019, binge drinking was 9.6% of students, and this is reporting four or more drinks in a row for female students and five or more drinks in a row for male students. So we're seeing a slight decrease in binge drinking, or it stayed about the same one, from 9.6 to like 9.7. Like, didn't really change much. And we are seeing an increase in the number of students who report getting alcohol they drank by someone giving it to them. That was at 44.7% of students who report drinking in the past 30 days, getting their alcohol by someone giving that to them. That could be a parent giving it to them, it could be another student giving it to them. But just a reminder, that is against the law for someone to provide alcohol to someone under the age of 21, which we don't want to see. And 4% of students did report ever using ecstasy, which is higher than the states reported of 2.5%, which I thought was really interesting to note. So this is looking at perception of use. So this is parental perception of use. Goodness. So these questions are asked, like, how your parents would feel wrong or very wrong for you to use a substance. So as you can see, the numbers are pretty high, which is great. We want parents to think that it's wrong or very wrong for their students to use alcohol, marijuana, and a prescription without a doctor's note. As you can see, there's like a slight decrease in the prescription without a doctor's note, but marijuana and alcohol are, marijuana and alcohol stay just a little bit the same. And then the next one is peer perception of use. So your peers thinking it's wrong or very wrong for you to use substances. So we're seeing a little bit of a difference. Peers not thinking certain things are, you know, wrong or very wrong to use. But we're seeing an increase in the perception of use for marijuana, and alcohol's gone down a little bit, and using a prescription without a doctor's prescription has gone down. So this one, we know that using a substance before the age of 13 increases likelihood that you're going to see, you know, increase in use overall. So this is looking at early onset of alcohol and marijuana use. This doesn't have 2019, or 2021 in it. I can give you those state numbers. No, sorry, must have... So now that we've looked at the data, what can we do? So we're going to tag-team this section. You can put it on the ground. So I'll add some of the things that we've been doing. So my role is really being this district's primary point of contact for prevention and related to substance use and suicide prevention. So this year, in January, we started working on a program called Getting to Y at the middle school. So the middle school does not take the YRBS, but the high school does. So the middle school students, there's a core team of about 10 students ranging from fifth through eighth grade. And they've been tasked to look at this data and to come up with a project to address something that they find concerning. So with Caroline Christie, we trained these students in this program. And since January, I've been coming into the school about every other week and working with them. They are fantastic. It's an amazing group of students. We had a data analysis retreat here in the library, and they were the ones who got their peers to get involved. We had this room full of 40 middle school students from fifth through eighth grade, and we looked at all the data, and they voted on it. And they decided what was most concerning to them. And now we're in the process of figuring out, how do we address this? We looked at strengths and concerns. And so one of the next things that this group is going to do is going to be holding a community dialogue event where they can share with the school board, with school leadership, with parents, all of the work that they're doing and the project that they're working on. And it's been really cool to see the students come together and have some really great conversations around what's going on in the school community, how can we fix it? And it's just been, it's been really neat to see the support from the school as well. These students are being excused from class to be a part of this program, and it's been wonderful. Another thing that we are doing with Caroline Christie, we are having a wellness fair in May as a part of National Prevention Week. And there will be other organizations coming to table to provide information. Our Getting to Y group will have a table at this wellness fair to give out, you know, information about what they think their peers want to hear in regards to, they picked mental health as their area of concern. So that's an example of something that we are currently doing. This is a two-year program, so we will be continuing this next school year as well. And the eighth graders have already, you know, we're trying to think of ways that they can continue to be involved even coming up to the high school.
And so one thing that I'll point out about that is, I mentioned the All Together Coalition has been in existence for, what, you know, nine years if not? This is the first time that we've actually had some youth involvement. So that's something that we're really proud of, and we're really excited about, and we really want to keep that momentum going. Because like Hillary said, it gives them some ownership. I understand, you know, we have the middle school students working with high school data, but it still gives them some ownership over this data. And it helps them to, you know, maybe the students that graduate up into ninth grade, it helps them to maybe encourage their peers to take, you know, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey when it's given. And it just kind of develops champions to do the kind of the work that we're doing and sends that message. So, so thank you for allowing your students to work with us, because we're just, we're really proud that we finally have some youth engagements, what we've been working for. So we know, Hillary talked about it, we know that mental health is a concern. So just to let people here know, a lot of folks on our team, in our community health team, are trained in youth mental health first aid or NAMI New Hampshire's Connect Suicide Prevention Training. So that is something that we can do. I came in, what was it, March of maybe last year? Caroline and I did youth mental health first aid for a number of teachers. We often will hold some evening virtual Connect Suicide Prevention trainings for our staff, for your staff to attend, or staff across the region. So, so know that we are here as a resource to provide that. So, um, so know that we are here as a resource to provide that sort of training to, um, to staff. And both of those trainings will fulfill that SBE, what is it, two eighty-two? Um, the required mental health training or suicide prevention training in New Hampshire. So both of those programs will satisfy that. So, um, so please take advantage of that you have in the past, and that's what we're here for. And then, uh, so another thing that we just started doing, um, and, you know, we'd like to bring it here, is to hold a parent education night. So I've done this, um, in one or two parts of the region already. We're trying to do it at each specific school so that people don't have to travel very far to attend this. Um, but we talk a little bit about vaping, we kind of do a vaping one-on-one because like Hillary said, across the region, that's what we're hearing people are concerned about. So we do a little vaping one-on-one, and then we spend some time talking about, uh, giving ideas, resources, suggestions on how you as a parent or caregiver can talk to the youth in your life about the dangers of alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. And that's taken directly from SAMSA's Talk They Hear You campaign. So while it's not an evidence-based program, it's sort of a best practice program. Um, so that's another resource, so we're sort of in the works of trying to get that scheduled, but that's something that we'd like to offer here. Um, and that, we'd like to take the opportunity to just hear from, you know, people in the community about what else they're concerned about. Um, because again, that will sort of guide the work that we do moving forward, to be able to tailor it specifically to what this community needs. So, you know, those are sort of the big, the big things. I think it's really important, like Hillary, when she talked about the, the, um, sort of perception of harm, that's a lot of the work that we do is trying to kind of correct this perception of harm. So we, we hear from people, from youth specifically saying, well, everybody's drinking, everybody's going to this party. The data shows that not everybody is doing that. And so that's what we really wanna challenge, um, is to let people know that that's, it, it's not what everyone is doing. And here are some, you know, here's the data to support that, and here are some other things people are doing. And then on the flip side, um, you know, so we saw, I think it was that peer perception of harm was kind of going down. So again, that's one area that we can focus on. But then the parental perception of harm, we saw that sort of going up a little bit, so that's really good. So every other year, we do a community survey, which I think the school's been really great about passing that out and encouraging parents and caregivers to take that. That sort of gives us the adult perspective of some of these, you know, data points that we get from the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. And that just gives us information to help tailor what sort of, um, awareness campaigns we're, we're putting out there. So, um, again, this Talk They Hear You campaign is a big one that we're putting out right now. But it just challenges parents and caregivers to have these conversations with youth and to make their, you know, views known to, to students. And hopefully we'll start to see those numbers, that parent perception of harm, hopefully we'll see those numbers drive up. So, um, so those are just a few things that, that we can do. But, you know, as always, please utilize us as a resource. We don't, outside of what Hillary does with Getting to Y with Caroline, we don't do, um, direct work with the students. It's more being a support for you at the school, being a support for, um, the staff, for the parents and caregivers in the community. And then we just hope to continue to sort of grow our youth, um, youth engagement as well.
Does anyone have any questions?
Anyone on the board? Yeah, go ahead.
First of all, of course, thank you all for, for being here and for also being active participants of the Wellness Committee as well. Uh, it definitely helps to inform the programming and what we, what we can do. But since we're in the process of, oh, before I talk about this. Um, we have a great AV club, and so it would, I, I can see some potential overlap between maybe some of the, uh, potential projects that the Getting to Y group could do and thinking about how, how to package that up for more, uh, visibility within the community. And so if you're not already tapped into the AV club, that would be a great connection to make, I think. Um, and then second, we're in the process of, of, uh, working on our strategic plan again here in the district. And, um, so if there's things in, um, in particular that you think we should keep in mind when we're building up that plan, we do have things like keeping mental health and social emotional learning and access to mental health services and social workers and that sort of thing within the district is, is built into there. But if there are specific things that you see in by looking at the data or looking at the trends in the data, both within the district and within the upper valley, that you think that we should know as we're, as we're, um, working on that, that would be great. Including anything around, um, the specific questions on YRBS that are still being asked around, uh, protective factors and, uh, perception around community support of students.
Yep, we asked the, um, community support question that I think you were thinking about on our community survey. Um, it's, I, I don't remember if they took it off YRBS or not, but they used to ask, ask a question around youth feeling like their, you know, voice is being hurt essentially. Thinking about the protective factors, um, I can dive into that, those pieces of the YRBS. I, off the top of my head, I believe the wearing a bicycle helmet while riding a bike has gone down. The students feeling hungry or coming to school hungry has gone down, which is great. We want kids to be fed. Um, and so some of those other like, you know, health-related questions. Um, the number of students who saw a doctor or a nurse in the past twelve months for something other than being sick was like seventy-five percent. It was great. Um, so that's really good. But I'm happy to dive deeper into those specific things if that would be helpful.
Yeah, if there's anything that you think would be, um, would be useful for us to keep in mind because, you know, we, we try to do this every five years or so, and so now it just happens to be the time that we're in the midst of it.
Yeah, I'm getting my, um, surveys mixed up because unfortunately we've already done twenty twenty-three, the twenty twenty-three survey, and we like just got twenty twenty-one data, which is a, that's one of our biggest pet peeves. So I'm, I'm, I'm mixing up the surveys, but if I remember correctly, I think they still are asking questions specifically around protective factors in the school. So feeling, um, I think one of the questions is, um, you know, do you feel like you are, I don't know, part of the decision-making in the school? I can't remember exactly. Um, but it talks sort of about school climate and things like that, so I think those will be some other ones that we can look into. I hope they kept them on, they've taken quite a few off that we're interested in, which is a big bummer because again, we can't look at that trend data over time. Um, and again, we get it so late, you know, so much, um, time has passed since the students have taken the survey before we get the results, which is a huge bummer. But one thing I forgot to mention, um, so, you know, we did this survey or this presentation just for the, um, results from this school, but I am working with another agency that contracts through the Bureau of Drug and Alcohol Services to look at the YRBS results of here, Lebanon, um, Hanover, Hartford, Rivendell, and that's it. And they're going to put together an aggregated, um, you know, presentation that I'll be able to do and give to, will be able to give to the entire community. So it won't have the school's specific data, it won't have any of that identifying, but it just gives us a much better picture of the true upper valley. Because when we talk about the upper valley results in here, um, you know, that just includes this school and Lebanon. And so we're not looking at a lot of others. And the work that we do, um, you know, looks at a lot more schools. So that'll just be nice, that's something we'll offer so that parents and caregivers and just adults and people in general will have access to sort of some of that information. So again, just wanna rest assured, it's not gonna compare the upper valley to the school specifically and open to the public. It'll have all of that data just lumped together as one report.
And that's because Hanover takes Vermont YRBS. So they take that. Um, but thinking about AV club, that's awesome. We know from, you know, looking at data and talking to, to students, that peer-to-peer education is super important. Um, and we know coming out of COVID, the way that we talk to youth about substances has changed. Um, kids are not thinking about the long-term effects of using a substance, they're thinking about the short-term effects, how it affects them in the moment, right here, right now. Um, so thinking about things like, oh, it's going to affect me singing in a choir concert, it's going to affect me playing in the championship basketball game, like those are the things that they're gonna think about. They're not thinking long-term anymore, um, which has definitely shifted the way that we are talking to youth about substances. Um, so anything that we can do to really create that peer-to-peer would be fantastic.
Cool. Any other questions?
On, uh, the questions for the risk assessment, is there anything there that, uh, poaches the measurement on the behavior for addictive, uh, like things like gambling or gaming for students?
I don't think anything around gaming or gambling is on there. They do ask, they ask about screen time. Yeah, they ask about screen time, but not, it doesn't get into, I don't think it gets into that. They do ask about parental addiction and students living with parents who are struggling with addiction, but I think that's very specific to substance use, um, and mental illness. They don't get into, they break up, they break down addiction into being substance use related.
Good question. I was saying, I was thinking that earlier today. Any other questions? Any public questions? Any, anyone out there have any questions for them?
Just, just one, I, the data that you showed on, um, the suicide and how many, how many kids have been thinking about, how many have a plan, how many actually made an attempt. That seemed, for me, that, that seemed high. And, and I'm curious whether in looking at other organizations, whether that's something specific for us or whether those are consistent among other places.
Looking, I can look, um, I have the upper valley report, so I can tell you what, like, looking at Masco versus the upper valley. If it's, I think we're pretty, we're not as high as the state in regards to suicide attempts, uh, but we're not far off. And when you think about the percent and then in the data, the report, you can see the percent, but then you can see the actual number of students. And that's, to me, what's really alarming is looking at like, you see a number of like twenty people. And you're like, that's a lot in a district that's this small, twenty people is a lot, twenty students is a lot. Um, and they do break down further into, you know, those who did have a suicide attempt, how many of those students required medical attention, um, related to their suicide attempt. It does go down into a little bit further, and it's, it's terrifying, honestly.
Yes, absolutely. Uh, any other questions?
I have a quick question. Um, the Getting to Y group, I think the student engagement portion of it is incredible, it's really powerful. Um, is that going to continue to move forward or is it just something like a, you know, kind of a pilot program? Or how, how does that work?
We were actually just having this conversation internally today. Um, so right now it's a two-year grant. Um, but our hope is that in this next year, we can create some sort of sustainability. So tying it into an already existing club or maybe create a wellness club. I know the Wellness Committee, we've talked about the creation of a student wellness club, um, but find a way for it to continue on, um, so that we don't lose this momentum. Because the students are really, really enjoying being a part of it. And I think as those middle school students come up to the high school, that's where we're gonna see this change. Um, is them bringing this, this learnings and these projects and programs that they're hoping to do into the high school. Um, and that's when we'll start to see this, this change that we wanna see. So yeah, we were, we were having that conversation of how do we continue it?
That's a good question. Then my, my concern, my only thought about that is, is when those kids start moving up to the high school is, you know, like next year, you'll have freshman class, they'll be alone, they won't be around those kids that they've been working with. So I wanna give them the support to continue that feeling so that when the rest of their, like, when the rest of those kids get up there, they have, they are okay and they're not feeling like let down or anything like that. So anything we can do to support that is, is good, work it in somewhere, but.
Yeah, we've started to have some conversations with the health teacher around how could we potentially work this into, you know, a health class and health curriculum, um, but also looking at, you know, maybe there's a mentorship aspect of this. So when those eighth graders do come up, maybe they are part of the training process for the new students who join the core team at the middle school and help, because they want to stay involved and figure out how to do that. Yeah.
Any other questions?
I think it's probably helpful that the, that the IRS program is during the school day, so you have less worry about transportation and all the other things that can, um, that can just decrease the number, um, of kids that can really stick around for co-principal kind of things.
Yeah, and when they did their data analysis retreat, they, the students picked who they wanted to invite from their peers. And they did such a great job of picking like, okay, well, we know this student maybe isn't involved in a lot of things. We'd like to make sure that their voice is heard. We know this student and this student maybe don't get along, so that wouldn't be very productive, so maybe. And they did such a great job of making sure they invited a male and female from each, each homeroom essentially. Um, and that's how we got forty students, and it was incredible.
Thank you. All right. Say no for the questions. Thank you so much. All right. So now we're gonna get into continuing business, and we have a couple of things I wanna ask if we can reorder. Yeah, we'll have, yeah, we'll have Sophia go first. And then after that, I was wondering if we could do quarterly reports and then the reporter section because we have Kanan Police here as well. Would that work? You guys okay if you're waiting for quarterly reports and then, because here's, the discussion might be a little bit longer, I think. Is that good? Okay.
I would go, if the board was wait, I'd go, go with them. I would go with them.
Well, I know that we gotta get them out of here too.
Well, I know, dude. They're on, they're on cable.
Yep, so, um, okay, Sophia.
I did actually write a list today and then I lost it to my friend. Okay, um, so a couple of things, obviously, um, quarter three just ended, we're moving on to quarter four. I think quarter three is the hardest, um, in my opinion, and I've heard from a lot of people, but we got through it, um, in the four. Spring sports just started, baseball, softball, track. Um, I know tracks definitely had a lot of success. Um, we have a lot of really good, like, um, like people have a lot of success on track, um, making state records, school records, et cetera. Softball and baseball, uh, will get better. Um, we had a hard start and we had an disadvantage with practicing on our fields and everything, but we're gonna get there. Um, the Washington DC trip, um, I went on was a couple of weeks ago, that was really successful. Um, we saw a lot of really cool things, people, everyone had a really good time. Um, and it looks like, um, she touched really well on the music trip and that, um, seemed to be really successful as well. And everyone that I know had a really good time, um, with that as well. Um, uh, the FBLA trip is literally next week, um, so I guess we'll be doing that as well. So I'll come back with news on that too, hopefully that goes well. It's not obviously as long as a trip, but I hope we're able to see some cool things and enjoy that time. Um, and then I think the last thing I was gonna touch on was prom. Um, we have a venue, we have a contract signed, it's on the phone. Um, we're gonna be doing it at Wagon Mountain in Danbury. Um, it's on May thirteenth, so seven to eleven, um, we hope it, you know, a hundred and fifty people. Yeah, I think that's about it.
All right, thank you, Sophia. Any questions for Sophia?
See ya. Get out of here. I'm, I'm your backup representative.
That's right, that's right.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, I'm sure you, as you said, quarter four is underway, so you've probably got stuff there.
Probably.
All right, so I want to entertain a motion to, uh, change the agenda and we'll do for quarterly reports next.
I think the motion is to go ahead and change the agenda to go to quarterly reports so we can, uh, move along with the staff and get out of here. Other than, there is a packing problem out by the bus terminal out there where the bus is packed. There's a vehicle that's packed out there, I think it's gonna get towed. If the Kanan Police could check on that. I think it has something to do with, uh.
With, with that woodchuck?
With, with, no, no, it has to do with one of the, I think the, I think the principal of the high school is packed up there.
Public meeting, brooder, public meeting.
Well, I just wanna make sure you had noticed, that's all.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to move quarterly reports next. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed.
Was there a second?
Yes.
Yeah, Daniel's second, sorry, yeah. Uh, and abstention, all right, quarterly reports. Who'd like to go first?
Oh, I get to go first.
I'd like to give her first, but when you get out of here.
Did, did we win on baseball today? One nothing. Okay.
That's, that's a huge step though.
So this is my quarterly report, and you're getting it on paper because it's got pretty little charts.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'll be brief, I promise.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So like Sophia said, it's been a lot has been happening. Um, we finished up winter athletics, um, we had many successful programs. I'm super proud to say that we will be hanging multiple banners. We have the first female state championship wrestler, we have the state championship male wrestler, we have basketball, we have so many awesome things. Um, I believe in, like, even indoor track, like, there was so many great things that took place over the winter. Um, I was really excited to get to go to another championship game, um, so that was really fun. This was the first winter carnival that we've had post-COVID. Uh, so last time the winter carnival was the freshman class, and it was so much fun. Like, the kids loved it, the school spirit, there was so much energy in the building, and there was no behavior issues. Not one single behavior referral in two days, I call that amazing. Uh, it was really a lot of fun, they offered a lot of activities, not just about athletics, they had different, like, they played Clue and like different games all over the building, so it was really a good day. The Lightning Thief production took place in March. It was amazing. They brought in EBS, solo kids came in and it was so much fun to see their energy and excitement. I got to go Friday night and some students that had already seen it, sneak peek from IRS on Friday, were there and they were so excited. And they keep asking me when Percy Jackson is going to go to the middle school. So I do need to talk to Percy Jackson to see if we can make his appearance. That was just so many hours everybody put in for that production. Stage manager, you know, Gabby. It was incredible, the amount of hours and effort that goes into those. It was so fun to, you know, be able to celebrate with them after the opening night. Guidance. College acceptance letters. It is so fun to see the kids getting their letters and then having conversations, you know, where do you want to go and how much money they given you? Because that matters. And really talking some kids through, you know, some tough decisions. They applied at five or six schools and where do you go? So having those, you know, which one has free laundry? Just, you know, discussing that with kids. We had SAT day. That was great. Students were, they worked hard all day. You know, they definitely thought all the rules. They had no proctoring issues. We started a little bit late in a few rooms, which ran a little bit late. Cafeteria left the calf open for those kids to get their meals. It was really a very successful day. Kids really did work hard. And lastly, students are still, have registered for the, their classes for next year in Alma, which is the new student information system. It's gotten great because the students are able to do it on, in the computer and then move on. Mascoma Matters. If you haven't heard about Mascoma Matters, it was an incredible day. They brought in six alum that came in and talked and then Brooks Hubbard played at the end and Indian River School eighth graders came over. It was really, it was really a cool day for, you know, all of our students to hear, you know, life beyond Mascoma, what's it look like? And all the different directions that people took. Next, I have some charts about behavior. So we use Swiss now here, just like Indian River had before. So we use Swiss behavior tracking software. And this is all part of our MTSSB, Multi Tiered System of Support for Behavior. You can see average referrals. We, you know, October's a long month. Everybody's, you know, the Heimlich phase is over is what we say in October. So you can see, you know, October spiked up, but overall, you know, we've had a pretty good trend and April's not too bad right now. I'm tired, but that's not reflective in the data. Referrals by day of the week. You know, pretty much Wednesday, I think everybody feels the stress of it. Wednesday is also a flex day in the building. So it's a little bit of a change of schedule. Anytime you change kids' schedules, it kind of like sets them off a little bit. I think Wednesday is probably reflective of that. And also if a student will skip flex or attempt to skip flex, because I sit with lists and pull kids out of the cafeteria, that could also be reflective of that larger number. Our sophomore class generally throughout the year has been leading the way. That's not reflective, it's just, I think it's maturity and how it happens. Seniors usually have figured it out. Biggest behavior problem is skipping. Documented, you can see the rest, defiance, they're nothing like skip. What I will say is, you can see, I did comparisons over the course of the year of the three quarters. And what I'm very proud to say is this staff, the students, they are really supporting our MTSSB system, building relationships with kids. And there's been a mass reduction in the amount of skips. That is a big deal because that is gained instructional time. And teachers radio for kids. We immediately go looking for them. We walk them to class or if they have an alternative placement, you skip a class, there's a consequence. They don't want the consequence. So we've seen a really big shift. And really, teachers care. They're calling for kids, looking for kids. We're going. So I'm very proud of that's the work. I give full credit to the teachers. We support them. Really, I give them the credit for calling us, notifying us, doing referrals and keeping the data good. And lastly, I just really wanted to give a shout out to all of our student groups in the building. We have Student Council and Drama Club and Biology Club and they're all listed here. Their advisors are, they, they work really hard to benefit the students and the community. And I'm very proud and Sim is too. And they are reflective of our students. They are a broad spectrum of students. They're involved in some club and it's really great to see. So I just want to give an acknowledgement, you know, to all the great work that the advisors and the kids are doing in these variety of community organizations that reach out to the community. Any questions, Sophia? I tried to talk fast.
I have a question. The numbers that calculate in for the tardiness and disruptive behavior, does that tie in with any of the bus issues?
So, yes, bus is under that category. I will say, we've had a sharp decrease in bus referrals. There was a point where we were getting large numbers. Some of those kids were probably old enough where now they got their license and they're doing their own thing or they're leaving with their friends after school because they got tired of getting in trouble. And as a high schooler, we can make alternative plans. So really, we've seen a sharp reduction. We did meet with a student today. Bus company got us referrals. Sim immediately addressed it and that student will be finding alternative transportation for a couple of days. But we've seen a sharp reduction. And even on Harper Bus, on all of our buses, we have not had nearly as many disruption, defiance, any of those things on the buses, which is nice. That's what we want, safe, right? We want our buses to be safe, mind keep our drivers.
Just a question on the referrals thing. What does the M mean in front of?
Minor. So there's two different fractions. There's a major infraction where they get to see Sim and myself. A minor is teacher addressed. So we contact parents if it's a major, if it's a minor, the teacher will reach out to the parent, which is, you know, again, keeping that relationship. They manage that behavior in their classroom.
Nice, play dice hockey. Minor and major.
Yeah. It's the same analogy, yeah.
Any other questions for Tina? All right. Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you.
Recommend you go to Father's Personnel, that's a crap.
Yeah, who's got it?
Who's got it? I think it's BeSo, I think. We'll do some, do quite a mileage.
There you go.
Let's try, Rob.
Yeah, no, we, we do a business guy. You're not on the quarterly.
Couple of, couple of safety calls there first.
Excuse me, you're, you're done. You're done. You had put that on the public thing. I'm, I didn't do the game.
Good evening. So quarter two really focused for us on professional development. We were lucky enough to attend some national conferences. We attended ASCD, myself, Jamie Winnie from Principal from EBS went, Angel Burke, Director of Curriculum went and April, April Gander from IRS went. And what we, what came out of that particular conference, what came out of the March conference, what came out of the previous conference that we had gone to with the, the School Psychologist Conference? The common theme that came out of all of those conferences is if you want to reduce the number of students in special education, you need to have a really beefed up tier one and tier two intervention system that's happening. And I was so excited that Jamie came along. She wanted to come along with us for a few days. And with the next year, looking at an intervention block over at EBS, I'm working really hard with Jamie to sort of look at what are those tier one and tier two supports going to be? Our school psychologist over at EBS, Dr. Nancy Brightman, came back from the School Site Conference as well. And she's implementing some things from a real famous guy named Kilpatrick on doing some interventions prior to referral to help reduce the numbers. So that really was the common theme that came out of all of these conferences is we really have to go hit hard at tier one and tier two and provide kids with the interventions that they need before they get to a special ed referral. Other really big thing, quarter two, is we're really starting to look at preschool. Our numbers in preschool continue to grow. Leah can tell you for sure because it feels like CES is ground zero for the numbers that are growing. What's happening, and I do believe that this, this is a consistent thing across the state of New Hampshire. This is not just from Mascoma. I do believe what we're starting to see is this first wave of kids who are coming out of COVID since 2020. Those kids are starting to hit our doorstep at pre-K. We have kids who are really intense needs, non-verbal, physically, physically disabled. And our special educators are doing the very best that they can with them. And then you pair that with a shortage in staffing across the region, across the state, across the country. It has really taxed our ability to be able to meet everybody's needs in the way that we commonly have in the past. So we were lucky enough to add through Title I. We were able to add another pre-K teacher. We've also had to look at the pre-K coordinator role for next year. It's way too much for one person to do, so we had to peel it apart. And so we'll have one person who's dedicated to CES next year, who will be a case manager, but who will also be somebody who will be able to coordinate all of those services and be able to do the same statewide reporting that we need, we need them to do. And then we've, we've got, the numbers over at EBS are, are pretty manageable right now where we don't have the need at this point for a special educator to do services. It's really related services heavy. OT, PT, speech, really, really heavy. It's also forced us to look at our contracts for speech and for OT. So we've had to restructure those for this year coming up. And that's, this all happened in quarter two. We, you know, chatted with Rita, OT. She's the best OT I think I've ever worked with in my entire life. We have really great people. And we were able to move Rita forward a few hours for, for next year. We're looking at code roles, our occupational therapist, assistant roles in a different way for next year. So I, I, I think we are able to sort of use our resources that we have to sort of move some things around to be able to meet a greater need as that need is coming in. The other thing, I'm going to be really quite honest with you is the word is out. The word is out on Mascoma and how we provide special education for kids in the Upper Valley. We have a really high reputation for what we do here. And so when a struggling family may hit the doors of Dartmouth Hitchcock, Dartmouth Hitchcock in a lot of ways is telling families, you should really go check out Mascoma. If you're looking for a place to live, if you have an intensive kid, go to Mascoma. And so those are some of the reasons why I feel like some of our numbers are starting to creep up in the pre-K area because the word is out and a lot of times, you know, Dartmouth will say, go try to find housing within, within, you know, Enfield Canyon. So anyway, that's just my two cents on that. Next quarter, when I come back, I'm going to have a more updated report on out of district. We have some shifting that's happening right now with out of district stuff that's happening. And it's happening right now. I don't have any updated, but there are some things that have happened. There are some significant things, some kids coming back. There are a couple of people moving out. So I think I'm going to have a, a much better updated on where we are with that. That's looking good for us. You know, the pendulum kind of swings this way and then it will swing back. Right now it's, it feels like it's swinging in, in a good way for us at this point.
Any questions for Chris?
I guess my biggest concern would be budgetary. You know, that, I mean, we're looking at next year and how you feel about.
Yeah. Yeah, right, right now I feel like we're, 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 we're really maxed out. And we have, we have great staff. If the numbers continue, again, it'll be about how hard we hit tier one and tier two. That's the reason why we're trying to hit tier one and tier two. We can hit tier one and tier two, hit those kids which are coming in the door in pre-K, kindergarten, first grade, get them the, get them the interventions that they need. We're hoping that, you know, numbers will start to tick down a little bit. But that's where consistently what we've heard is if you go after tier one and tier two, your numbers should follow and should come down.
When I hope when we base the special ed budget, we base it in real time, right? So we look at the kids that we anticipate, you know, if we have an eighth grader, we know we'll have them as a ninth grader. So when we do that budget, we anticipate and budget it for those students. So I don't anticipate unless we have some significant move in, any real traumatic, you know, special ed costs.
And it will be interesting to see after, after we start getting more and more kids post-pandemic, if, if the, if any lagging or any early interventions can, can really jump them forward with their, in comparison to their peers. And so, yeah, so that'll be really interesting.
Yeah, it, you know, sometimes it, because it's not just about Mascoma. So I sit in these meetings with other directors from across the state. And it is, every school district is being throttled with this wave of kids that are coming in from, you know, from 2020, these pre-K kids that are coming in. And it's, it's pretty, it's pretty significant across the state. So that, and you pair that with, you know, staffing shortages, it, you know, it makes it tough.
I think you're on the right track for the tier one and tier two. Get them early and just like prevent, you know, tip that ahead of time. Anything else, Chris? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Leah, do you want to go next?
Sure, I guess it's a good segue since Chris just mentioned the situation. So I'm going to start there just to kind of follow on. So preschool, to give you an idea of what we're referring to. So in our three-year-old preschool program alone, we have four non-verbal students, all of which require one-on-one. So that's four adults. And if they require transportation, they're in the morning session, which means you could have the preschool teacher plus three one-on-one adults in the same preschool session. So it is a little complicated. Couple of things just to note, I'll just run through quickly in the order of my report. So enrollment's been holding steady. Interesting thing to note, we already have many more kindergartners sign up than we have had in my entire six years. So we don't know if they're signing up early or if there are more and they're going to continue to come throughout the summer. So we're already up to 44, which is, it's going to be interesting, so we'll see. I think Chris had already mentioned that I allocated work with Angel to do a Title I grant to get an extra preschool teacher. It's only for this year, so I don't want to, that we, we have a grant just for this year. It depends what happens with Title I, whether we'll be able to have that grant for next year. So starting on Monday, some of our preschoolers, our three-year-olds will be getting extra preschool, which is awesome. Another big thing that's changed is we did apply two teachers and I gave them special mention and appreciation. Katie Rafter and Mary Langland started a drama club. They applied and got some grant funding through CLIF. So that's been really delightful because it's one of the few things we do that's cross after-school, but it's a lot of different ages. So it's been really interesting to see some kids doing an after-school program that don't typically do one. I'm not going to talk too much about CLIF, other than to say it continues to go super well. Loved Family Literacy Night. We had a big turnout of families, really a lovely event. And the only other thing I think I would note on here, just to call out, is that the only challenge I would say that's been particularly different recently is we have had an uptick in just really highly, highly escalated psychological type of behaviors with two of our kiddos. The staff, it's there, it's within the arc room, the BCBA, the staff are doing an amazing professional job. But it has been a little draining. And we've gotten a lot of support from, from Chris and a bunch of other people that we needed to call in to make some tough decisions. So big thanks to everyone there. And unless you have any questions, I'm going to leave it there because you've got a lot more reports to do.
Sure. Any questions? Thank you for that update. I'm really excited for drama club at the younger levels because we've been talking about how do we get more kids at our beautiful arc rooms? So that's how you start.
Yep. And you all may be receiving a, receiving an invitation to come watch Jack and BeSo whenever they get it. It will be early June.
Hey, that sounds exciting.
All right.
All right. Thank you, Leah. Jamie, you want to go next?
Sure.
All right.
I want to piggyback on the high enrollment. EBS, I think, has historically not had 39 pre-registered kindergartners, but that's what we're at right now. We also are, are ready on a waitlist for our preschool for next year for four years. We also are ready on a waitlist for our preschool for next year for four-year-olds. I think we have 21 students already pre-registered and we have 17 or 18 three-year-olds already pre-registered. So we are going to be tapped out as well. So that's a concern and definitely is, is bringing some challenges to us for next year. Our enrollment is pretty steady. We've had a couple of students recently move in that are needy in a sense that they need a full-time one-on-one. We have a couple of preschoolers that have started recently that are going to be in kindergarten next year, but we know that they were kids that we're going to need to look at for an identification of some sort. So we, we brought them in a little early to just make sure that we get eyes on them early. But otherwise, we're doing okay there. In the report, I put lots and lots of pictures because we've had lots of early fun events come up recently. Our buddy reading has been a huge success. We have during our, the Read Across America week, we did a lot of things across the building. And then the middle school and high school had some students that read to our kids over Google Drive. So that was really fun. We also have fourth graders that go into our kindergarten classrooms and, and read every week. So that's also really fun. Our, our CLIF Grant Owl Day was epic. Our team worked really hard with Vins to do a virtual owl visit. The exciting thing is they got to see an owl who looked like a camera. So that was really, that was really amazing.
Never gets engaged, right?
Oh, I mean, you know, it's just never, it never goes away from being fun. The Eleanor Kitchens who came in, she was amazing with the kids. She brought in wings and beaks and talons and they got to touch them and talk about them. And they did all kinds of really collectivities throughout the whole building. And so kids really enjoyed that. And I think, you know, building lasting memories, which is really exciting. And then Denver Green, who is our P D teacher, he organized that the kids are challenged and our building raised over $10,000, which at the time that I wrote the report, put us 11th school in the state for how high, how much money we raised. And then the young man in the picture is a kindergartner who raised, he and his family raised over $500. And he got to pie Mr. Green in the face, which is another thing that's happened, right? And it's very cool. So we've had some really, really fun things going on. We're excited.
Sounds like a really exciting time.
Yeah.
Cool.
That student looked thrilled to pie Mr. Green.
And bouncing and hopping down, you know, it was, it was really, really kind of.
Well, thank you, Mr. Green, for putting himself out there. Any questions for Jamie? Cool. Thank you so much. Kevin, you want to go ahead? Thanks for.
I'm going to leave this. Take a wild beat out.
There's no pictures in this one.
You're right. And there's no chalks. My colleagues. We've had some run of good luck lately. Destination Imagination Team, again, going to Global's in Kansas City, Missouri. My assistant principal will be joining them again with Izzy Curia, Abby Lockett, Gretchen Lockett, Stone Budson, and Jayden Beeks. So congratulations to them. We have five new members to the National Junior High Honor Society. Gretchen Lockett, Ella Vatten, Carter Goodness, Brittany Gillis, and Ian Mascot. And our math team won the Twin State Math League for the year. And that's quite a feat from what I understand. Alex Bolton, Carol Geraldi, Kylie Hollis, and Kyle Russell are the team members. So we had some student success that we needed to celebrate. Professional challenge, professional training challenge is an area of focus, all running together around our Nellens plan. We had the New England League of Middle Schools. Again, we did this five years ago, sent a visiting team. They visited us, we did surveys, they gathered all the update, the new updated data, reviewed our plan, and gave us four areas of recommendation going forward. The plan has been finalized and sent to the Spotlight School Director for next year, so that we will do a progress report in September. And should we get some of these things tuned up, we will be going for a Spotlight School designation next spring. So it's exciting. We've done a lot of innovative things in the last two months with a different look at our schedule for next year. As we're downsizing staff, how can we be creative? What can we do that is best for kids? There's been a lot of excitement in the air. We're on a good roll right now. And so that's our challenge going forward, is to continue to plan and to reach that status.
All right. Cool. That's good to hear. Any questions for Kevin? Congrats to all those, like honors from all those kids, math team champs and junior high. That's awesome. And, and, you know, from what they were telling us with the, you know, public health council, working with all the middle schoolers there, that's awesome too. So it sounds like you've got some great stuff going on.
We have our musical this weekend.
Oh, that's right. That's right. Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, right?
Friday and Saturday.
Friday and Saturday?
Friday and Saturday.
Okay.
I think there's a two o'clock one on Sunday. I think there's a two o'clock one on Sunday. Thought I thought on calendar. Ellen said she sent it to, I'm like, so.
All right.
Sent it to Marissa. I think it should be there.
Consider us fine. All right. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
And as we see, Mr. Sutt, you want to go next?
He doesn't even rock you because he probably wants some more money.
No. I, I don't want to be the Debbie Downer because there's a lot of great things we've heard tonight.
All right, you're going to go last.
It's closest to home.
Does anyone make a motion to have a seat?
But we do sincerely have a real good AV department. You know, we're doing a lot of great things, streaming events, trying to improve all the time. So that's done a great job. And so I'm going to segue to 12:15 a.m. Saturday morning. My phone started, while I was driving, my phone was giving me some alerts. But since I'm not one who texts and drives, I had my wife read to me. Well, what's happening? At 12:00, Saturday morning. I'm like, this is not good. And so, I mean, long story short, made some support calls to Consolidated, which is our internet service provider, to start looking into what was going on. Didn't get much of a response Saturday. Called them Sunday, said they don't see problems on their end, just with their Tier One. Long story short, through Monday now, we did kind of come to the conclusion that the Consolidated box that they give us, that gives us both our internet speed and our speeds, is failing. They don't have any on stock right now, so one is on the way. So we are in a, today we got speeds back up. Trying to conserve some bandwidth too. YouTube, we kind of blocked to just so we could like get payroll probably to run. We figured it forces it down. It's part of our history war. But I, I think it'll hold somewhat steady if we can maintain, you know, mission critical use. But it cost them to read the first sentence before tonight. The technical department makes it priority one to support workflow to staff and students. Been a little rough last couple of days, but it's certainly nothing we can control. I mean, equipment does die and it's time to replace that box and we're all on our way to doing so. But really from those texts and all the support calls, what's more, which caused the, the least sleep is our, is my concern for security. And, you know, all I'm thinking like, this is a virus, this is a malware. I did commence to submit a cyber evaluation with our insurance company. So we are running all kinds, we've run up at like two o'clock there. We had scanned over nine million files. No detection of anything anomalous yet, so that's good. So we're going to continue to finish those tests. They're going to do two more tests. If it's real bad, they'll send somebody out. It's not really a bad time to kind of have somebody dig into our network to see what's going on. We do a lot, as, as this says, a lot of security things. I started a presentation last week with the board. I'm going to continue with some. We do all we can. But when you look at our reliance on our online life in this district, I mean, already we've had the fraud online testing this week. We hold our breath for, for payroll, other online services that we do. I got one more, grading. It, it's just crazy, the reliance and, and also the susceptibility of, of how close we are to our district stalling. And important to have our plan B, you know, continuity plans. I think everybody's managed pretty good so far with alternatives. I, I was certainly endeared to see that when, at least in high school, I can't speak for anybody else because I was here. You know, Tina made a call overhead about, you know, can, can we just stop with some of the, you know, stuff we don't need to be doing, let's focus on just Google Classroom for the students. And they all listened really. And so made it really easier for us to get a baseline while we did our test today. So I thought that was pretty cool. But let's hope we get through till we get a new box of being sustained. Right now we're running fine. Everything's fine. But the, the box is failing, which is causing heat, which is causing ports to jump from active to inactive and causing speed fluctuations. But one's been ordered. Hopefully it's quick.
I hope so.
And as I mentioned too, I mentioned that our AV, our AV stuff continues to do great things. I've been to a lot of colleges over the last couple of months. I've seen a lot of other meetings online. I've seen a lot of other events at schools. I, I think we do as well as anybody. I mean, we, we, and we obviously take feedback to make things better. I think where our hands are in a lot of things, I think we can, we can do more and we'll continue to do more. Are we running a live radio station yet? Yeah, more or less.
It's music going right now on it.
What's that?
It's music right now on it.
There's music? So we'll continue to grow with that. And we are finishing up. I'm going to put it on hold a little bit till we get our network back for our, our public wifi. So that's, you know, soon, we're hopefully, I think by graduation, we have a complete unveil of staff and students and parents and grandparents and kids being able to jump onto our network via a portal and try out our outdoor access points, provided we're going to be outside. And indoor as well. And then from that point forward, there'll be a web portal that people will be able to use when they come on campus, public included, obviously.
Cool. Any questions for Craig? Once you don't make me have to back up again? Thank you so much for everything. When I, when I heard from my kids that they're like, you don't do this work. And I'm like, oh, how's that coming? They're like, well, Google Classroom is up. I'm like, oh, well, you're fine. That's good. All right.
You didn't miss the rest of the meeting.
Okay. As you can see, curriculum update is in your packet. Angel is not here, but that's fine. Who's Angel? All right. So I will entertain a motion to move up in the agenda, the Route Four discussion.
We did. We did.
They only did the.
I thought we did that one with the.
We only did the one for the recorder, the quarterly reports.
No, I thought we did both.
Nope.
It was just the.
We didn't?
All right. You want to vote?
I made a motion.
All right. Do you have a second? All those in favor, simply say a aye. Aye opposed abstain. All right.
Because we take you off the speed and ticket you got.
Oh, okay. Chief Porter, Officer Button, thank you so much for coming tonight. Yeah, yeah. Thank you for your patience.
I'm Ryan Porter. I'm the new chief of police. I know most of you guys here, but whoever I don't know, that's Ryan. I, I know that we're here to talk about the lovely morning traffic on Route Four. And before I do say anything further, I want you all to know that I bring my son to school almost every day and I experience everything that you guys are going through. So I get it. I understand the frustration. I'm not so sure that there's a good answer to everything, but we're trying to address it now. So what is the major concern that I can help you with?
Well, let's see. Well, I'm glad you come here and dropped your son off school because that's, that's huge that you experienced it.
I do.
You know, I, I think from myself as a parent and your parent, and you know, we have people in the manner of your parent, you know, getting in and out is just that 15-minute window, 20-minute window of a lot of young drivers that are coming in that are insecure in their skills, you know, not knowing when to turn, when to come in, things like that.
Or maybe they're over.
Overconfident? Oh, yeah, the opposite, overconfident. You know, so there is speeding still. I see some, you know, of, of cars coming through. I think it's just the, the confusion and just the lack of direction and the lack of, of people's ability to, you know, you'll have like a line building up and they'll wave someone from out, but it's not necessarily safe to wave someone out and how it, you know, and I guess we're just looking for like, what can we do? Where, how can we work together to make it better? You know, that, that's pretty much, we just want to start a conversation, see, you know, open that, open that line.
And I appreciate that more than I appreciate the Facebook comments that, you know, Katie Pree is not doing it. I will tell you, and this is going to come back to bite me and I will knock on wood, but since January, when I have taken over, we have done everything we can to put an officer in the school zone. We're limited staff, we're limited budget, and we're trying. And we have not had a crack, I don't even want to say it, but we haven't yet. And I, this may come back to bite me. But when I come through there every morning, I watch what happens and I watch what people do. And my experience is I have sat there for three, four, five minutes and waited for cars to go. And I get frustrated and then I tell myself, relax, just take a deep breath, be patient. And then my time comes. And that is, I think, is the biggest thing. And every car crash that we've had at that intersection has been driver inattention or impatient. And I don't know how to solve that for you guys. I wish I could. I wish I could do that for everything we deal with, but, but, but I can't. And I, I understand it is a difficult intersection. There's nothing that I can really do. There's, there's 11 lanes of travel there. And I can't safely put an officer out there without being terrified that they're going to get hit or hurt or killed. I, I just can't do it. Typically during, when we, I was talking with Chief Porter about this. Typically during graduation, we have a minimum of three officers running that intersection. And that's just for traffic coming in and then at the end, traffic coming out. We also take away two of those 11 lanes and close off the end of Blackwater Road. So it still requires, you know, there's three of us out there and everybody's head is kind of on a swivel during that time as it should be when you're, you know, performing, you know, duty like that. And I think it's just the fact that, you know, unfortunately, like this area is, is growing, you know, and we're now getting a larger volume of traffic. And I, if I timed it wrong coming off Canaan Street in the morning, I timed it the other morning. I sat there for four and a half minutes. Because I had, there was traffic that was traveling westbound on Route Four and then the southbound traffic coming off of 118. I mean, there was a solid line of cars and there was no way I was going to turn left. I sat there for four and a half minutes. In, in little downtown Canaan. So. I, I am, I, I, even if I could put an officer out there, I don't know how to fund that. I don't, I don't have the budget to fund another officer. I don't have another. I, I just, I thought about this, I mean, daily when I drive.
I was going to say, when you're sitting there.
I do. And I, I hate to be the person that has to come here saying, I can't put an officer out there in the intersection, but I can't afford to lose Matt. I can't afford to lose another officer. And I just wish there was a better solution. The only solution I can come up with is what has already been essentially evaluated with the state is how do we fix this? Can we fix the intersection? And they said, sure, but, but the district's going to pay for it.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're not willing to help us. And quite frankly, I reached out to the engineer again and I don't think he wants to talk to me because he already talked to Chief Frank before. And he gave him the same thing I think that he was going to tell me. I, I don't, I will commit to making sure that there's an officer out there as often as possible. I've spoken to Officer Button and he's committed to patrolling the area when he comes in, but obviously we want him in the building when the students are coming in. There is a short window of time that he can be out there as well. I oftentimes will drop my son off and I will go back down and I will sit and I will wait. So sometimes there's two of us. Sometimes that causes almost more of a backup, right? Because everybody's going slow and I'm happy to see that, but they panic when they see a police officer. I, I do feel.
I do feel as though that, you know, the presence of a patrol car, you know, between West Barns Road and, say, the Listen Center, you know, that does have a large impact on that. And I think people, you know, Joe Weaver has been very diligent in being out here in mornings. You know, and, you know, and he's stopping cars and, you know, and the kids are seeing it and they're talking to me about it. And they're a little like, you know, why is he out there stopping so many cars? Well, because that's his job. And, you know, this is really for the benefit of you guys and everybody coming into this school. So I think it is, it is having an impact for sure. You know, and it may, it may take a little bit more of that, I think, to get us to a point where people just kind of, you know, that's how they, you know, they function. Once they enter into this, you know, this area, you know, they sort of know that, you know, this is how we need to behave. So.
Oh, I was just gonna say like, because I think just having this conversation is good because, you know, people in the community are like, well, what are you doing about it? And so now we're here talking. And that's good and we can open that dialogue. And I actually work for the Regional Planning Commission and we do corridor studies. And on this Route 4 corridor, that was a major one that came up. So, you know, we're trying to get into the tenure plan for being addressed by the state, but I totally understand what you're talking about with the engineer. But yeah, that's all I was gonna say, but yeah.
I mean, does anybody have any suggestions?
Yeah, hoping then...
Well, one of the things I kinda wanted clarity on, we brought it, I brought it up once, is that why we couldn't do a right turn only during, for like a 15-minute period and then a right turn only on Blackwater, so people aren't jutting across? I mean, there's no infrastructure change there. It's two signs.
So we have a slight issue. If you do a right turn only, let's take Blackwater Road and only right now.
Yeah.
So if you come off Blackwater, we actually have students and we have parents that take a right off Blackwater and now they're doing U-turns in the middle of Route 4.
No, they couldn't route, just go, you know, what's that road? Blackwater Road, you know, just do a left on Blackwater and turn right. Because they're trying to get back to Canaan, obviously.
Yes.
Right, so they just turn left on Blackwater.
No, he's saying when people come, they're waiting there to try to go straight across the intersection and they're pulling right to go towards Listen and then they're doing a U-turn to go back to the high school, right?
Yes, yeah.
Well, that's not good.
So when we force people to go right, like when we force them to go right, they're going to find an alternative route to get back to where they need to go. And that's gonna be a U-turn in the middle of Route 4 and I don't want them to curve.
Yeah, no, I hear you, yeah.
As far as going right, you know, out of the school, we would have to probably do some more planning and intersection work to do that. And that's gonna cost a lot of money to make that happen because you're, well, you, I don't know, I'm sure NHTSA or whoever will have to require that there is a median there or something, a signage. It will cost a significant amount of money to paint the roads and everything like that, so.
I'm not talking about adding a right turn lane. I'm talking about just a sign that says during these times, it's a right turn only.
I think for Blackwater Road, I think that would have to go on a town order in order to get that, in order to get that changed.
Well, sure.
That's, you know, that wouldn't happen for another year, essentially.
Kathy, do you have a question?
Yes, I wanted to do a comparison. Enfield, I believe, has one of those signs that says your speed is and it's usually on during the busy times for the village school there. And we've talked about having signs out here to caution people to be more alert. Not so much about what your speed is, but it brings their attention that they're going through the school zone and they need to be paying a lot more attention. But we've been told that Canaan won't finance that sign and it has to come from the town where we want the sign. Is that true?
So I think I'm just saying, you're saying the town Canaan won't finance the sign to put on Route 4 for the school?
Right, the electronic sign that they're talking about.
So that's, I don't know that for sure. But what I can tell you is that the Select Board has asked me to investigate trying to purchase these signs along with a couple of people in town. The signs were mainly meant for downtown. So coming into downtown and coming from Orange, we were trying to put signs up there. They're over $4,500 apiece. We don't have the money in our budget for that. So I have now found grant money where there's a 75-25 match from the state. I'm trying to apply for that, but I don't think that's going to be given until 2024. The first sign I will try to put out there is on Route 4 for the high school. But to do it both ways, now we're talking $8,000, $9,000, plus the downtown ones, two signs. I don't know where to get this money.
It does sound like a lot of money. The smaller, like the digital...
The ones that are permanent, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, like on... And they're going too fast with blue light flashes?
Like you're doing 45 and it keeps going. And then as you slow down, they can see that they're getting down to, like they're usually, in Woodstock, Vermont, they've got a great one by that bridge that's so dangerous.
Plymouth, New Hampshire.
The red light flashes and you can see it from afar. And, you know, the out of staters don't know what's going on down there, so they all slow down. And then, you know, you get there and then it's like, I think the speed limit's 25 when you go into that part of town.
I think they're really good reminders and certainly I would be more than happy to work with the board. You guys had some additional money. I would apply for the grants. We could come up with a 25% match and we could get these purchased sooner. But as far as purchasing four signs, I can't pump that up.
Well, we've been talking about this for a long time. So, you know, a start somewhere, even if we only can get one a year, you know, we would accomplish it in four years and that would be great.
That would be.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, obviously, the inner workings of whether the district can allocate some money towards, I don't know how that works, but we are trying to get one and the first one I put up will be out there.
I think there are grants at the Department of Transportation for schools, specific things, like sidewalks and, you know, things like that. And I can't remember what the grant is called, but I think there are.
Well, I have noticed since January, I think just somebody like, I'll be sitting there, I'm like, oh, there he is, sitting over there. And I think just like you said, the presence are just like, at a random day, you don't know which day someone's gonna be sitting there. So people are starting to think like, oh, there might be, you know, a police officer there. I'm gonna, you know, take a little easy, I'm not gonna fly, so class for here, so.
Yeah, and we do have about $10,000 that we're giving by the state in grant money, which is going to allow us to put officers out there on overtime patrols between hours of the school times.
Oh, awesome.
So we're going to start doing that all the way until school's out and that's going to be heavily increased out there.
Awesome, cool. And Bruce, you have anything for that?
Oh, yeah, I do. But I'm just waiting for everybody else to chime in.
Anyone else?
We've discussed this, Andrew, I'm aware of how you say that word, from finance facility all the way through to everything else. I think there is, if you check, this is the state highway, number one. If the state police had grant money so that they could help you out with patrols, that would be one return if you get the money in here to try. Number one, you're just slowing them down, that was one thing. But state police would come in here and even though it's a quick, it's maybe a week or two of just, you know, presence of those, yeah, of those guys being in here, that would eliminate for a while and then get people to say, hey, we gotta be slowing down coming through here. And the thing is, the state police would do that because you'd get grant money from the state police and they'd come in and they possibly would come in here. But the thing is, what I want, my biggest point I wanna bring up, and I've been doing this a lot of years and I've seen it, and I know it's a bigger intersection here, but I was here this afternoon and I saw the whole group trying to come out of here. And I was sitting in the parking lot down below. Interlakes High School and Middle School is on the main road. I know it's only a two-lane road, but the police officers from Interlakes, whatever time they start, I think it's 15 minutes or 10 minutes before the school gets out, one is positioned right by the, one of the parking lots and the other one's up the road from the other parking lot where they can go in. And they're there with their lights on and they're out there by the road, but they're not in the middle of the road. But they're waiting until school gets out. It's like, I don't know, quarter or three or whatever. If you're not there by quarter or three to get by to go to either the middle school down below or the high school off of that road, which I don't know, it's Route 4, whatever that is. I've been here a number of times and I go officiate and I couldn't even get into school yet because they wouldn't let me go down either one of those schools. Because the guys, until the buses come out and school gets out, you're not coming in. You have to wait another 10 minutes or so. I said, no, all right, fine. But they're out there on that main road. They're only there that 15 minutes. I know it's a staffing problem, but they're there every day when school gets out. And that's the afternoon group. I don't know if they do in the morning. They might do in the morning, but I don't know. I've never been over there. But it eliminates people coming in there and people trying to get out until it's time to go out. And I thought possibly that might be a solution here in the afternoon, but because I saw a bottleneck this afternoon here, but it's only a 15-minute deal. You're not having anybody come in here, you're not having anybody come out. And then I hear the excuse, well, we gotta bring people in, we gotta do this, do that. No, the buses are already here. The buses are already here, athletic teams are already here. They wanna come here before that time period. And the bus that came for the baseball team was in here way before quarter or three, before the school got out. I watched them come through and get in there and get out of there. I know it's a different situation because Interlakes over in Meredith, maybe, well, as I say, I try to see different things around the state, how things...
That's a T-intersection on Route 104. It's not, it's not...
What's that?
It's, you know, Interlakes, it's just...
No, it's up on the hill.
Right, but they, but their driveway coming on to 104 is just a straight T-intersection.
Now, the four-way makes it...
Well, no, no, what I'm saying, that, what I'm saying, that is, they only make it a one-way in when it comes to the afternoon. That's the only thing I was saying, the afternoon, that's the only time they let people, you know, go in is before that time period and then nobody comes out until the buses come out.
Well, and I think part of that issue is I don't know that we have adequate enough space here for vehicle traffic. You know, we obviously, I mean, we've had to substantially change what goes on out front here.
Yeah, I know.
Due to some people's poor actions.
Yep.
And, you know...
Yeah, no, I understand that. I appreciate that. I understand it's a bigger intersection. I know it's a problem.
So that's, I think that's one thing, is we just, we don't have the capacity to handle that volume of traffic in here for them to come to pick their kids up. We don't let anybody, you know, we don't let anybody out until the buses get out. We're gonna, I think we're gonna kind of hamstring ourselves if we're not careful. To speak a little bit about the state police piece of it, I believe that state police would not agree to do that because we have a full-time police department and a population of over 3,000 in the town of Canaan and they will not, they do not have jurisdiction here. We invite them here, but state police doesn't have jurisdiction here.
Well, I was mostly, I wasn't making them do the traffic detail. I was making them come in here and you've got one officer that's dealing with it. And the staffing issue, if the volume of traffic coming through here, because everybody's going to Dartmouth and going to college and going to the hospital at that morning situation, is you've got one officer, he's not gonna be able to handle all the... I'm just saying the traffic.
I appreciate what you're saying about it, if I may. If I put three or four officers out there and we start stopping cars, we're gonna cause chaos. One officer causes chaos when we start stopping cars out there. And I'm reluctant to do that. I will put out as many patrols as I can out there, which means we'll have two officers out there. And I think, you know, sometimes three, we could handle that, you know, whether we're up on the west side or on the east side. I do believe that we would be able to control that for the next couple of months. Unfortunately, state police, I just was in a chief's meeting and they are not responding to calls in towns because they are down to lower than 70% of their ranks that are full right now. It's just, it's, and they basically said, we'll take the call and we'll leave it for the next patrol guy that comes on through your town the next day. So they cover towns throughout the state for departments that don't have full-time officers like we do. And they're not responding to calls. And so for me to call them and get around here, they're not gonna come out. You know, they're too tied up. So I will commit to putting more officers out there. I will definitely work on the speed sign. And if there's more, I will jump all over it and please let me know if there's anything else that you would like me to try to do.
I think the speed, like I say this, I think the speed sign is just a matter of, there's one over in Bristol, we've probably been over there, all right? And that thing comes on about a mile and a half before you even get up to it, okay? And it doesn't do any good because it's in the wrong spot. I didn't even talk to the officers over in Bristol, I've been over there. And told them, I said, that's in the wrong location, it really is. Because it goes from 50 miles an hour down to 25, but the time you make the turn and come down, I mean, you might be okay over here putting one of those little small signs up.
Yeah.
I think, I think also, you do have that speed machine like Enfield has. Do you have one of those?
We do, but it's down right now. It's a big repair.
The one in draft is saying like...
It's under construction right now.
That works.
Yeah, I think, I think, was it a couple of years ago, it was Enfield that was able to blow them up here and they put out like the first week of school? I think that's good, just three miles, put the schools back in, you know, hey, it's been quiet here for the last couple of months, but schools back in.
Well, all the grant money that we have will go through October of this year. Excuse me. Yes, October of this year, so we'll stick everybody out there.
So Chief, you see an increase in speeding, I mean, you think you can borrow that Enfields one again just for...
I can, yeah, I can ask them. They had it out and it was down for a while. They're not, they're not real reliable, is the problem. They get bounced around and you transform all over the place and break.
A lot of censoring. That's what he was accusing.
Well...
Well, anything is, it's an improvement and, I mean, just your presence and knowing that you will be there sometimes and it's almost better.
Yeah, because I have random...
I would have to say that the, you know, the vast majority of student drivers that I, you know, that I have contact with here and, which is probably the lion's share of kids that drive here. You know, they are very much aware of what is going on. And anytime they, and I think it's kind of school-wide, you know, not just, not just necessarily traffic, but, you know, if they see more than just my cruiser here, they're coming to me going, what's going on? So they're aware. So I think, you know, to see, you know, an additional cruiser, you know, or two in the morning, you know, they're paying attention to it and, you know, I would rest assured that they're going home and talking to mom and dad about it, so.
It is a lot to, I mean, to navigate for a new driver. I mean, it's...
Yeah, man, that's a big concern of ours. You know, kids, we don't want to see anything happen.
I mean, that's the bottom line.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that I think it's, I think it's great and yes, our team drivers do come home and talk about things. And occasionally, they actually take our advice and go and take the left off of Jones Hill Road to go on Blackwater from the other direction so they don't have to scoot across. But I think that it'll be great if the grant money for increased patrols will be able to be activated from the beginning of the school year because I think we've had that, we've been able to see anecdotally, you know, the impact that it's had now. If we can continue that through the, through the end of the school year and then everyone's gonna forget everything. And so being able to do that again at the beginning of the school year will be super helpful, I think.
They get a temporary vacation and...
Yeah. Yeah. And I think also, because I've noticed, you may have noticed as well, an uptick this year or in last year of kids that walk to school, you know? And it was not that much when I was dropping my kids off when they were in middle school, but now when my kids are in high school, I see a lot more kids walking and so...
It's far more parent drop-off.
Yeah.
That did shift with COVID because when we had the buses, we asked parents, can you, you know, maybe get some, you drive instead? And I think some have kept that habit. And so we definitely have seen an increase. So there is definitely an increase in parent drop-off. Luckily, a lot of them come up and go off and take a right and then go off to work, you know? But not everybody.
Two there, two there, two there. I know about that one, there could be two there. Same with on the bus, with all these people dropping off.
Yeah, yeah, well, drop them off.
I'm guilty of it. So I take the bus and I drop the work.
But that fits, the buses do fit into this picture too. You know, the transportation and the getting maybe shorter bus times and...
Yeah. And I think the reliability, not to throw other people in the bus, but the reliability has not been great.
Right, yeah, no, it all, I mean, this is, it's the whole picture.
It is.
You know, and even kids walking, well, we need, I think we need some sidewalks, you know, that maybe from the Listen Center out, you know, whatever. Just so safer, I see kids walking on Route 4.
At least a crosswalk of some sort, or some sort of, you know, and we can look at it.
You need sidewalks, period. You don't have any sidewalks in the downtown area for the children to walk to the school.
Elementary school.
Yeah, but that's, that's a different conversation.
That's a yet different conversation.
Yeah, I wanted to ask you a question. What's your feeling about e-bikes? We've been seeing more and more bikes during the nicer weather and stuff. Do you see where that's going to add to our problem here at the school with the students being able to ride on e-bikes?
I mean, last year, I did see a few kids come down Blackwater, they come from Enfield down Blackwater over the rail trail. I mean, it adds a little bit to the crossing across Route 4, gets a little dicey. You know, they're a lot faster than people walking on Route 4. I would rather they didn't do it, but there's nothing that I can do to prevent them from doing it, unless they're doing it legally.
Right, and that's the thing, you know, they have to follow all the same traffic laws that you would hold a vehicle, they have to, you know, ride with traffic.
So are they allowed to ride on rails to trails, because they're motorized?
Yeah, they are.
It's an electric bus.
It's an electric.
So even the ones that are, the class three, I think it is, has the bigger engine in it?
Yeah, as long as they're electric, we can't prevent them, they can't have a motorized vehicle on it.
So that's not, actually, that's safer in my opinion, to have them on the rails to trails, so.
Yeah, it is nice. I think the dicey thing is when they come up and they come up into this.
Trying to get a pass.
Up in here with cars that are dropping off and people, the other thing, so.
That would, I think that would be a school policy thing to prevent them from doing it.
We're trying to get our heads on, together on a policy for e-bikes.
Not a lot of districts have a bike policy, so we're trying to have to craft one our own.
But they're considered a bylaws.
No, 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 we just want to make it safe, we just want to say, if you're having a bike, please follow the rules, please, you know.
It's like the snowmobiles, we have a policy on the snowmobiles when they come in here, that's the thing, snowmobiles and motorcycles. That's, you know, in automobiles, you already got that, but.
Amanda, do you have anything to add, or, I know you talked to Chief Porter plenty, but.
Yeah, I will say that, and where Chief Frank and I had a slight disagreement is I do feel that people speed through here, and by speed, I mean, it's twenty-five, not thirty-five during the, when it's a school zone. So I think just the increased patrol has made people aware that it needs to be twenty-five and not thirty-five. At twenty-five, I can safely see a car and take a left turn. You know, I can see a car coming, you know, from Canaan to Enfield and take a left turn there. At thirty-five, it gets a little dicey. Danielle's point about the beginning of school being critical is true. People, it's busier, people are driving their kids, it's fun to drive your kids to school at the beginning of the school year, the traffic has increased, people haven't worked things out. And it's, it'll be critical when we start up again in August that we have increased patrol out there, just to remind people to slow down. The one accident, was it this year or last year, I don't even remember, they all, my units went together.
It was like the first week of school, right?
It was.
Yeah, and I think, I was gonna say, I think, I would have to look trash at it, but I think anecdotally, most of them happen in September, probably.
I would, I think you're right.
So, you know, percentage-wise, obviously, they can happen anytime, but, yeah.
Sure, but I think some of the, some of the ones that we've had are certainly earlier on in school.
Right.
Correct, and then people get sick of driving their kids and they love to take the bus. But it's just, it's true when parents do want to drive their kids and drop them off the first few days of school, it's true everywhere. Being, having been in multiple schools, worked in multiple districts, I have yet to see a solution to that glut of traffic that happens every day, in the morning and in the afternoon, and then it's kind of gone. So, I mean, it's the million-dollar answer to figure out how to provide, you know, smooth transportation in and out when you increase the number of cars by a thousand, you know. So, guys can do that, I buy into your company.
I just want to leave you guys with that. The first thing that we're thinking about is this school district and this, the intersection, because we know that it's important. It is, the optics of it are, you know, right there in front of you. And I just want to make sure that you guys understand that we are taking it seriously, we're gonna continue taking it seriously. I will commit to whatever I can do to fix the problem. I know I won't fix the whole thing, but we can certainly hopefully change it. Really, the last thing, I just thank you for supporting our SRO program. I mean, we're acutely aware that around the nation, SROs are having some troubles right now. And I appreciate that you guys have always been really supportive of our program.
You can't eliminate, can't eliminate the SRO at all. I mean, if anybody wants to try to eliminate that, like they tried, what they've done over in Lebanon, pushed for that, I'm advocate of keeping the SRO here no matter what. Because there was things about, well, the principals could take care of it, well, no, they can't take care of it, that's not their job for doing that.
Well, I certainly appreciate it, so, I know Matt does too.
Yeah, well, thank you so much for coming down, and when, you know, budget time comes around, let's talk.
Yep, please let me know.
To like get together on a matching grant, something like that, because I think we can get something done. I appreciate this a lot, thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys. All right, let's see.
At this point, I'd like to ask that you move Rob up.
I was just gonna say.
We're two hours into moving.
Thank you, Mr. Chief.
He's got a long.
All right, all those, I make a motion, we'll move President's Administrative Report next, do you have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, Rob, you're up.
Thank you very much, I'll keep this brief, since we've had a lot of reports tonight. In the packet you will find is a capital reserve fund balance is ending in March, and we're gonna have the unreserved fund balance warrant articles to that in the near future. There's also a copy of the capital improvement plan in there, but since I wrote my report, we're gonna also change a few things, so don't take it too seriously right now. We'll produce another one with a couple of changes, and then we'll get board approval at the next meeting. You will notice at the bottom that we have negative balances, and that's only because historically, you've put a hundred thousand dollars every year, this year, you're doing two fifty. And as you go over here to here, you can judge what you have to warrant articles to keep feeding the capital improvement plan. I do need a couple of things from the board tonight. One is, it was in your packet, and it was public notice, but it didn't make it on the agenda, is to approve the seven thousand dollar, the Daniel Burn Foundation for Destination.
Yeah, yeah.
So we can get board approval for that this evening, I would be great.
All right, I entertain a motion to add to the agenda, the Burn Foundation grant.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor of adjusting the agenda, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, all right. In that case, I'll entertain a motion to approve the gift from the Tupper Foundation, the amount of seven thousand dollars for Destination Imagination. All right, Danielle, move, do you have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, any discussion?
Thank you to the Burn Foundation.
Very much thank you to the Burn Foundation, thank you, thank you, thank you, in the case, thank you, well, I'm sure. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, that is all set. All right, anything else you need, Rob?
One last request from the board tonight, there's somebody, Chief Porter, I believe, gave this to Martha after I wrote my report. This is a mathematics as a case in trust grant. Notice, I don't know if there's a copy in the packet.
Yeah, there is.
Yes, okay, good, so you can see it. So it's a, and I think, the deadline is May first, so it can be to the next meeting. So it's a three thousand dollar grant for mathematic construction technology. And that would go, you know, to focus on, you know, evaluations and adjustments to how we use technology and mathematics and improve education outcomes.
So do you need?
Need a motion for three thousand dollars.
No, no, this is a motion just to apply for the grant. It's likely granted.
Make a motion that the district applied for the enhancing student mathematics learning through the use of tools and technology grant as presented.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
All right, open second.
So I have a question.
Yes.
Question.
Yes.
So why do we have to approve this, this grant process? I don't see where we go and approve other grants.
Yeah, I was wondering, I was actually wondering that too, like.
Is it over a thousand dollars?
Yeah, it's over a thousand dollars.
Okay.
That's why.
The amount is what's bearing on there?
Right. Yeah, I think over a thousand dollars, we have to approve it.
They need to apply at the first place.
Apply, just to gain that or donations.
All right, any other thing, anything else?
And this is, this will be specifically for the high school or for the whole district?
I believe it goes through pre-K through twelve, so be sure.
Yeah, it looks like it's in three groups, pre-K through five, six through eight, and nine through twelve.
Yeah.
So, all right, all those in favor of approving the application of the grant, approving, applying for the grant, signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, abstentions, all right, that's all set. Anything else?
I don't know if you have any questions.
I do not. All right, thank you, Rob, for sticking around with that, okay.
Go to the communications, that way I can do two reports.
Finance Facilities next.
Well, I got that.
All right, Finance Facilities is up next.
Yeah.
So that's there in our thing, do you want to talk at all about the presentation we had?
No, I want you to look at it and read it, and then we all, you move on, if you want, and you want me to discuss that?
Well, we should discuss it, that's what we do.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we don't have to get into great detail, because they're not here tonight to talk to us, because they're gonna come to us in the future.
Right.
But we can give the board a heads up.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, anyway, we met, went over this stuff, and, all right, went over the track and field proposal.
Yeah, just break that.
All right, they came, all right, no, excuse me, but I'm trying to get it through here. They went over that, and they just want to go to do fundraising, and they brought that up, and you can see in the back of the packet what they proposed to do, what they want to do. They gotta raise a whole bunch of money and fundraising, and they've already had people come in and take a look at the fields. So that's exactly what it is, the second paragraph, they wanted permission to do that, discussed how this would impact other sports, they talked about that, they all came in, and told them they'd come back at some other time. And we, and we sit with the board and when they get going, and this is a long-range plan, because it's not gonna happen overnight, because it's a big money.
Yeah.
Big money, and there's a lot of questions to be asked and a lot of things to be done, and so that's just, just the way it is. That was the big part that we got, they left. Toronto went over his regular report, and then Rob talked to us about his finance on the CIP, and the audit went well, we did get a copy of the audit. They were gonna, I think we got, did we have it in the board packet last month, I think?
Last week.
Last week.
Last week, yeah.
And they'll come talk to us about it in the future.
Yeah, they'll come talk to us in the future, yeah, I'm getting it, Tim, getting it. Yeah, so, we're gonna come tonight, this meeting was supposed to be, supposed to be short, short on the, on the, before midnight. Budget, he's gone over that, and we talked about cafe services, transportation, and drivers' education, we already approved that on the board last meeting. On the increase will be in September, and that was about it.
All right, so, yeah, so the transplant that you see there, just for information, because they will come to us next meeting or the meeting after?
Oh, the meeting after.
Okay, so last meeting in May?
Yes.
Because they'll basically get started on their preliminary fundraising, and they just want permission to get started from us, because we gotta give them permission to start on that, right?
So my question when I was reading this, and by the way, there was at least one student there that is not involved in football or track, and that I think was, had been part of that conversation, or at least was there, I don't know if he actually said anything, but. This seems like something that should go through CIP and longer-range planning. I find that it's really tough to fundraise, especially for a large campaign, without having really specific guidelines that you can tell people. Because businesses don't necessarily want to invest in something that they're not sure is for sure gonna happen, and within the timeframe of when their business is gonna be viable. So to start fundraising for something that there's not necessarily like a real hard and fast plan, and we haven't built it into our overall facilities kind of discussions, seems premature. I love the idea of it, and, don't get me wrong, I could see a lot of, lot of plus sides to this. But to say yes to start fundraising before really thinking through what this means for our community and for our school district, the timing seems to be off a little bit, for me.
No, it's a good point to comment, and we'll have, yeah, so start thinking of all those questions, because we'll be able to talk to them, you know, at the end of May, so.
I think you're correct, Danielle, I think the first step would be looking at, you know, I know the title of the account that we just dissolved was long-range planning. But it really was specific to just looking at renovations to this high school. So I think probably the first step will be in creating a CIP that addresses long-range planning. And allowing us to look at future projects that are large, such as this. But at this point, there's no mechanism for us to accept any funding.
Right.
So that would not be able to happen, I think we'll probably, this is coming the last weekend, at the last meeting in May. And we'll start to look at, you know, we'll let them present, like, look at it, see what's happening, and then we'll look at next steps, moving from there. But you're correct, I couldn't take any money on this right now if I wanted to.
Because I think that having as a long-range planning, if we had a little bit of money in a long-range planning account, then we could set up an engineering study to find out how much it would cost to do a whole thing, where would it sit? You know, so you do take those preliminary steps first, and then you can say, is this a viable plan?
Well, they had, they had somebody take a look at it, but they did have, I asked the question, did they have, they didn't introduce everybody, but they did after I asked. They had somebody from every sport at that meeting, so, and I told them, it's gonna, it's gonna be, you know, they're probably not gonna see it as far as these kids are here now. But their biggest thing was, you know, the community wants, wants the track, I would think, for, you know, like over Lebanon. So, you know, we didn't discourage them, we just, we gave them positive feedback and let them, let them go. But they got a lot to do before they can get any further on, you know, so.
And that would be my biggest concern, is it premature to get them in for a presentation? Because, you know, you have a group of people that are, you know, getting, trying to psych us up about it. And are we gonna be able to say, this is a great idea, it's gonna take us a decade to do this, so, thanks, give us your paperwork, and we'll let you know when it's time to talk about it more?
I don't think you want to discourage them, I don't, I don't think you want to discourage them, because the biggest thing I got out of it was that, you know, the track people, the people, they said, well, we've been doing this for so many years, and that. And I understood that, I understand that. And it's, you know, I understand all the questions, and it's gonna be a lot of questions, but, but they, you know, you gotta have, you gotta have a lot of things in place before you even decide that this is the way you want to put this. Because there was a lot of things talked about, about where are the other teams gonna practice while we're building this, and, you know, and all this stuff, so.
So I guess my concern is just, is, would it be more discouraging to have them come here and basically say, we can't do anything for you right now with this?
Right.
You need to, like, pause on it until we build it into, build in this conversation about, because it's gonna take us another year to put a warrant article on for long-range planning. So like, is it something that needs to wait even for a presentation? Because fundraising is off the table.
I could certainly push it up, I mean, your next few board meetings are chock-a-block full.
Yeah, yeah, we can certainly.
I would say push them back, but you don't discourage them.
No, I agree.
Don't discourage them.
Well, no, no one wants to discourage them.
I'm not, I'm explaining is the wrong word to use, but I'm just saying, they come storming in here, I had no clue that they were coming to find us silly, it's like, realize they're all here.
Yeah.
And I'm like, what you guys got going on here?
Well, they, they put in their assumed spring/summer twenty-four construction.
Yeah.
Which, that was them thinking, we're gonna get started right away, you know, and that's, that's thinking like timeline of.
Because they've already had somebody come in here and look, look at the fields, look at the layout and all that stuff, you know what I'm saying?
They did, I didn't think they said that.
Yeah, they did.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah.
They did, they did, before, when they came to us.
They have a quote.
In the finance village, yeah.
So how would this be for, for a possible thing? We are going to, at some point in the early summer, as we always do, do a board retreat. Could that be a time that we ask them? Because that's when we're talking about what are our plans, what are our longer-range goals, could it fit into that day so that, you know, we give them that context? So that we want to learn about what the ideas are and how we can fit it into the plan, so they.
What's the priorities system?
Right, right, and not necessarily have them think that, not frame it as, please make us a presentation so that you, so that we can approve you to start fundraising? When we are pretty sure that is not going to be the action taken, I think.
I think, well, it's a good suggestion, but I think.
Kathleen, I was, I think I have.
So there's a couple of things that happen at Finance and Facilities, and one of them that I recall is that Rob said that they could fundraise, and he would accept the money and put it and hold it into a special account. But I think we need to clarify that, and, and then, of course, the draft minutes, you know, say that Amanda will be in touch to let them know when they can come to the full board meeting. So we, we need to, I think we need to have them exactly what you said at our retreat, because that's an excellent time to get them on the same page that we're on. And I did wonder when we were sitting there listening to it, because this is an actual proposal from this company, Field Ventura. And it has an information, who prepared it, and it's just that it's for the Massima Valley Regional High School. It doesn't tell you who their contact person is, and I don't think they do this stuff for free. So I'm, I'm curious as to, you know, did they pay for it, and where did they get the money from?
I was thinking it was just a quote. That's what I thought. I didn't think they paid any money for that.
It's a quote.
Personally.
Clarify, Andrew.
They're like, here's our size, what do you do? How much would it cost to get a field this size with a track around it?
I hope it's.
I hope, yeah, I hope it was just a quote, yeah.
You know, I said, I hope it's non-binding, because, you know, I, I got the impression that they thought they were gonna go out and, and get a project manager, and they were gonna start paying for all this stuff, and I said to them, you don't do this. You know, after we get all of the paperwork done, the project manager is, is someone else.
Yeah.
And they're like that.
Yeah, I think, I mean, as much as, as I, much as I love the super enthusiastic part of it, I think that the district needs to lead on it, because it is our facilities. So we have to kind of put that into our long range plan. We have to put, be like, this is our vision, this is what we want to do, let's all get together and make it happen.
Yeah.
As opposed to like, you know, piecemeal like this, so.
But it's gotta be.
Well, I'm gonna put everybody's attention to the page that says asking for.
Right.
So the page that says asking for is that they're requesting the school board to create an account for motivated members of the community to begin to fundraise for the project. Not asking, uh, at this time for the board to approve funds, or to submit a proposal, so there's been no proposals submitted. There's been no wetland study done, there's been no engineering study done. I believe that John Daly just went through and said to someone, hey, if I wanted the top of the line, track and field, football stadium, what would it cost me? So that he had some idea of where he was headed.
Yeah.
So that's the project you're seeing. That has not been approved by the business administrator or myself. So we're not bound into this. I just want to make sure nobody's with it, that's like off your plane.
Right.
So really, he's just looking for that account. And I think if we look at seeing him next fall or something during the budgeting process, we can say, all right, this will be the time where we look at the warrant article that would ask for, um, the long range planning for the track. It'd be a warrant article that would ask for, uh, hope, what was it that we were thinking about? Sustainability, sustainability type of piece. So I think we have some work to do this fall, when we're looking at the budget stuff. I'm happy to let John Daly and his team know that we'll revisit, we can visit them again, they can come and talk to us again in the fall, put it back into our minds, and we can move on from there.
Yeah.
That would be easier, be a lot easier.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think maybe, you know, like you said, the retreat might be a good time to talk about it, you know, maybe one of the.
I think the retreat's too early.
No, okay, no.
Maybe we can, maybe we can talk.
Yeah, I mean, and the budget process sounds like it, it would be a, a good time.
Yeah.
Because I need it fresh in my mind for warrant articles, right? Because if we don't do it then, we wait too long, and the budget process, it's not good, but too early is also not good.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I got the comment tonight that said, why'd we give back a million dollars to the towns after they had the budget with whatever, and I said to him, because we have to on certain things, so. I, I squelched that, because.
Yeah, we can only retain so much.
Well, yeah, well, I had to explain that to a certain administrator. So, is in this building. It's not, it's not the principal either.
Not getting that much back this year.
No, all right. Um, nothing else on finance facilities than Communications Committee?
You've got the minutes in your packet, um, so you can see what sort of, what parts of our website are, are getting, getting some traction. It's always interesting to see that. And we talked about the, um, we talked about AV Club, and we also, this, this new format of the room came about as a conversation related to, um, the audio and visual impact of our board meetings. So, we're trying this out. I think it's been
I've been okay with it. How have you all felt?
Yeah, so I don't think.
With the exception of this.
Yeah, they had, I didn't tell you this, but when I came in, I guess first year, it was set up the old way. So I moved this stuff around, but I didn't, I wasn't gonna touch all that, so. Ordinarily, we'd have, yeah, a couple.
Yeah, and that was awkward.
That was a little awkward. I didn't expect anyone to sit over there, quite honestly, because, whatever, so, sorry about that.
So, yeah, so and our next meeting is June 1st.
All right.
Any questions?
Any questions, Matt? All right, joint loss?
You want me to?
Yes.
John, right, it's, we had five cases, we went right down through them. You can see that, where we had that, you know, and and, uh, no recommendation on two and three, and CPI training on the other four and five, and and our organics study done. We did talk about the school physical optimization, and that was about it. So we did get a, we're gonna review the district safety plan, which was handed out to us, which we didn't have time to go over. And then we're gonna meet, and hopefully, the next meeting will be August 23rd.
All right.
That's it.
Cool. I think normally of EIC, did you guys not meet last, last, the other week?
No, did not.
Okay, were you able to reschedule?
No, nothing's been confirmed.
Okay, um, make sure you check your emails, get scheduled for EIC.
I heard Thursday.
This Thursday?
That was the rumor.
That's, that's the proposal.
Me too, I'm a committee.
Rumor, I love it, rumor.
We didn't have confirmation on that, so.
Okay.
Angel hasn't heard from Vicki.
Oh, okay.
Or Hope, so.
All right.
I didn't see that email. I checked them today.
Oh. All right, check your spam, maybe.
It could be, if, if it was the other day, then maybe it got stuck in the internet spiral.
It could have. They all sent out last Thursday, the 20th.
It's with the chipmunks.
All right. Just, yeah, all right, just make sure we get that.
I've already scheduled things over that.
Oh, okay.
So I, if, if you want me there, you'll have to wait until the next schedule.
Yeah, see me?
Or you can proceed without me, but I've already scheduled things at that time.
That's good. All right, just keep us posted. Okay, uh, we've done that, done that, done that.
Yeah.
All right, new business, staff retirement celebration, June 5th. Are you looking for a motion in this?
No, that's just a notification.
Oh, okay, all right, good.
Do you have anything else on you?
Oh, yeah, Amanda's report.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
We saw it, we read it.
Superintendent's report, right, we didn't read it, but go ahead.
So, um, it's very exciting. We're entering hiring season, so you'll see some resignations. We do have some people that have asked for contract extensions, so we look like we'll be hiring May and into June, which is not always great, but we will get it done. Very pleased with some of the candidates that we have, where hopefully, I've encouraged my administrators to jump right on some of those great candidates. So, I hope to be clearing up, um, you will see that Leah has submitted her resignation, um, here. Round one. And, um, also.
You might as well head them out.
Now you want help, because you've been sitting for two hours.
Yeah, but I was standing on the field for two hours, still hour and a half.
So, um, you'll see, we're already starting those interviews. Those will, those will happen, um, this week and no next week for those. So we're moving right along with that. The strategic plan group keeps working, sports move on. Um, and Angel will be doing an alma presentation coming up soon, so we do have that also.
Excellent. Any questions for Amanda?
How it going?
Hold on.
Hold it. I heard, I heard, almost, good.
All right.
It's one, nothing.
Oh, and also, I did not testify on Friday. They bumped me.
Oh, yeah.
So I did not go to testify, so there were 11 superintendents testifying on May 1st in Brentwood, which I can't imagine will happen. But I think we'll be looking at getting bumped. I'll, I'll, I'm right dead smack in the middle of the list, so.
No idea.
I might have to go both ways.
Ooh, lucky you.
Potentially out of the district Monday, the 1st, and Tuesday, the 7th.
Yeah, that lawsuit that we are in, the Conville lawsuit, it is going on now. Commissioner Edblu has been on the stand, and he had some very interesting things to say, so look it up in the news
Yes.
if you haven't already, so.
Did a background check on Amanda, so she was there all set.
Oh, boy, all right. agenda items for next meeting, as you see, committee reports, support staff nominations, uh, EOPs, and student and athletic handbooks for the high school and middle school. We're gonna set our board retreat date, we'll have bus and cafe updates, and then the class president from here at the high school will come and talk about, if that what that is, come and talk about their classroom.
Yes, um, you also do have the presentation from the auditors.
That will be next meeting as well, okay. Excellent.
Oh, you got the copy of it.
All right.
Should have a copy of it, all right.
Yeah, yeah. Public comment? Sticking with our state required 30 minutes, no public is here. As you see, so we have personnel and resignations and nominations here on our green sheet, so I'll entertain a motion. Entertain a motion for that.
I'll make a motion, we take the staff nominations and resignations with regret.
Second.
And Danielle, second. All right, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions. All right. And we have non-public?